We're ready.
The May thirty-first City Council meeting is called to order. We have our invocation by Detective Ralph Patterson, Jr., Birmingham Police Department, business compliant unit, followed by our pledge of allegiance by Counselor James J. Roberson, Jr. Please stand.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It is my honor and privilege to stand before you this morning. Let us pray. Lord God omnipotent, you are above all nations. Take our lives and use them for your purposes. Lord cleanse our hearts, forgive our sins, and teach us to amend our ways as your transforming grace changes our lives. Today, inspire our mayor, City Council members, and those that work, live, worship, educate, and play in this city to be true servants of your will. In these challenging times, give us all the wisdom to labor for justice, to love mercy, and to walk humbly with you. Keep our minds and spirits steady as we strive to please you. We pray in your sacred name. Amen.
Amen. To the flag, our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Abbott.
Present.
President Pro Tim Hoyt.
Present.
Councilmember Lundey.
Here.
Councilmember Rafferty.
Present.
Councilmember Roberson.
Morning, Ms. Clerk.
Morning.
Councilmember Parker.
Morning.
Councilmember Scales. Councilmember Tyson.
Morning.
President Austin.
Present.
Morning.
The minutes are not ready from March first through May twenty-fourth, twenty sixteen. Let's do the consent agenda, Ms. Clerk.
Okay. Consent agenda starts on page two with item number one. Skip over to page four, we have item two on consent. Page six, items seven and eight are on consent. Page seven, items eleven and twelve are on consent. Page eight, items fourteen through eighteen are on consent. That's fourteen through eighteen.
You said page seven, items eleven and twelve?
Yes. Page seven, items eleven and twelve. Yes, sir. Page... It doesn't?
No, it's not on mine either.
Oh, okay.
On the electronic one.
Must've changed after the print.
Yes, on the print, but it's not electronic. Okay, but you said eleven and twelve?
Yes, sir. Page eight, items fourteen through eighteen. Page nine, items twenty-one and twenty-two. Page ten, items twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five. Page eleven, items twenty-seven, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, and thirty-two are on consent. And that concludes the consent agenda.
All right. Do we have any members of council wish to add or remove anything from the consent agenda? Council Lundey.
Yes, Mr. President. On page six, item nine.
Okay.
That's it?
All right.
Mr. President.
Council Abbott.
I wanted to ask just a question. I don't want to take it off consent necessarily, but on item eleven and item twelve, I thought that Jatina Akop Architectural Studio was already the architecture firm working on the Intermodal Facility and the Civil Rights Institute. So it makes it sound like we're doing a new project. Of course, at Civil Rights we might be, but what about the Intermodal Facility? Can Mr. Bittes answer?
Yep, Mr. Patton.
Yes.
Counselor, on item number twelve, this item we brought to the Finance Committee back in April about the non-compliant work that we identified in the field, and the contractor is actually going to pay for this work. What we're doing is just reimbursing ourselves back from the contractor to this project. And I included this letter from him. And basically, Counselor, since the Architective Record works for the City of Birmingham, the city will advance the funds, and the contractor is going to pay us back for the full amount of this work.
Okay, thank you. Well, I can remain on consent. I'm fine. Can I see if I answered the question?
All right. Mr. Pro Tim, he said it was about twelve.
Yeah, well, and, yes, the number eleven, could you explain that one?
Yes, sir. This is the work we're doing for the water infiltration project at the Civil Institute. If you recall, Council, the Council appropriated about one point five million dollars to do the repair work, and this is really for the construction administration, for the architect to make sure the work is done properly according to the drawings.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Do we have any other questions? Item ten, we can add that to consent. There are no objections to it.
That's fine.
And, Ms. Clerk, you said item nineteen is not on consent?
Nineteen? Yes, sir. It is not on consent.
It is not. We add that to consent, too?
And item twenty?
Item twenty wasn't on consent?
No.
It is on mine.
It is on this one.
Electronic it is.
Okay, well, it's not on the printed.
Twenty's... Yeah, that's, I don't know how this got mixed up.
But it was...
The, some of the items on the printed document is, they are not on consent, but then some on the electronic document are on consent. Vice versa.
It's a loading process. It didn't load the word consent, obviously.
Yeah, item twenty, so it needs to be on consent.
It needs to be off consent, okay.
On.
On, okay. Item twenty. So we probably just need to go back over and make sure.
And then, item twenty-six. Has this been court taken place?
It has.
I thought so. Okay.
Is it on consent?
Item twenty-six is not. Do you have something I want to add to? I was asking had it already taken place or said it already happened?
It's something that the mayor does every year. I think he's been doing it since, I know he's been doing it since he's been mayor.
Twenty-six.
And I'm sure it's, I'm sure it's a part of our budget.
Wow, yeah, I just wondered if it took place. We can add it to consent if there are no objections. What? Yeah, it's on. All right.
Can we run back through them right quick, Mr. President?
Did we add item five to consent?
Uh, no, sir.
What about item four?
We can add it to consent if there are no objections.
Item four.
Good, we just had to have a public hearing, or call for a public hearing on item three and four.
Object five, being on consent.
All right. Okay, Ms. Clerk, you can go through the consent agenda again.
Okay, thanks. Two, I, page two, item one. Page four, item two. Page five, none. Page six, items seven and eight. Page seven...
Nine was added.
Added nine as well, okay. Thanks. Glad we did that, yeah. Page seven, we had added ten, and we have eleven and twelve on consent. No?
That's correct.
Okay. Page eight, we have items fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen on consent.
Nineteen was added.
Nineteen is added. All right, thank you. Page nine, items twenty, item twenty was added, and items twenty-one and twenty-two are on consent. Page ten, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six was added to the consent agenda. Page eleven, item twenty-seven, and then we have items twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, and thirty-two.
Twenty-eight added?
No.
Yes?
All right, no, it's not on.
No, okay.
All right. Like to add three and four. Um, do we have any objections to items three and four? It's a public hearing, but we can call it off.
Well, normally we read them, but I guess if you notate the public, they can come forward and speak to the items. I don't know if it would cause a problem or not. Mr. Roberts, is there any issues with three and four?
Okay, will those not be added, three and four? All right, we have a mover.
I move approval.
Okay, one second, please. Give me one second. Abbott Parker. All right, voting should be open. Voting should be open. Councilmember Tyson, Pro Tim Hoyt.
Yes.
That vote should be up.
All right, that item passes. Next item should be item three. Item three, Ms. Clerk.
Okay. Item three, a resolution assenting to the vacation of approximately two hundred and sixty-five point thirty-two square feet of First Avenue South and Eighteenth Street South on behalf of Parkside Residence LLC, City of Birmingham, and Municipal Corporation, HRT of Alabama Incorporated, KPC Realty LLC, Railroad Square LLC, the Children's Hospital of Alabama Corporate Furnishings Incorporated owners, so that the building encroachments can be eliminated for live parkside development and adhering to parties, case number two thousand sixteen dash two.
Who the item?
Second.
Roberson, Abbott.
This, this item is a public hearing. Could you give the report, please?
Sure. Uh, this is subdivision two thousand sixteen dash two, and it is a resolution determining whether the City Council will give us assent to the vacation of approximately two hundred and sixty-five point thirty-two square feet of First Avenue South and Eighteenth Street South between Railroad Park and Second Avenue South, so that building encroachments can be eliminated for live parkside development and whether such vacation will deprive other property owners of such right as they may have to egress and egress from their property. The one-third right-of-way vacation fee has been set at five hundred and eighty-eight dollars and thirty-one cents. On February twenty-four, two thousand sixteen, the subdivision committee of the Birmingham Planning Commission recommended approval of this vacation to the full council, and on April twelfth, two thousand sixteen, the Public Improvements and Beautification Committee recommended approval of this vacation to the full council. And that's all I have.
Do we have anyone to speak for or against this item? President, ready for the vote.
All right, we're ready to vote.
Okay. Voting should be open. That vote should be up.
That item passes. Next item.
Should be item four. Item four, a resolution assenting to the vacation of approx, approximately four hundred square feet of the block, two twenty-one alley that runs parallel to and between Second Avenue South and Third Avenue South and perpendicular to and between Twenty-seventh Street South and Twenty-eighth Street South on behalf of Davis Properties LLC, Chapel Hill Investments LLC, Providence Properties LLC, and Southside Investment Company LLC owners, so the owners can consolidate their lots and parking areas in the hanging of our parties, case number S U B two thousand sixteen dash three.
Who the item?
Second.
Roberson, Abbott, Counsel Tyson.
Yes, this item four is a public hearing. Can you give the report, please?
Sure thing. Uh, this is subdivision case two thousand sixteen dash three. It is a resolution determining whether the City Council will give us assent to the vacation of approximately four hundred square feet of block two twenty-one alley that runs parallel and to and between Second Avenue South and Third Avenue South and perpendicular to and between Twenty-seventh Street South and Twenty-eighth Street South, so that the owners can consolidate their lots and parking areas and whether such vacation will deprive other property owners of such right as they may have to egress and egress from the property. The one-third vacation, right-of-way vacation fee has been set at thirty-eight thousand dollars. On March twenty-third, two thousand sixteen, the subdivision committee of the Planning Commission recommended approval of this vacation to the full council, and on April twelfth, two thousand sixteen, the Public Improvements and Beautification Committee recommended approval of this vacation to the full council.
Madam Chairman? I have a question. Yes. I noticed that the last vacation was two hundred and sixty-five feet for five hundred and eighty-eight dollars. This one's four hundred square feet for thirty-eight thousand dollars. How do we set those prices?
It's based off of, it's one-third of the, uh, basically the tax assessed property value of the adjoining property.
Of the adjoining properties, not of the property we're vacating?
Vacating, that's right. Yeah, we use the rates of the adjoining property.
Okay. Well, that makes better sense, because I was trying to figure out why the big jump in, in the one-third vacation fee.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Do we have any other questions? Do we have anyone to speak for or against this item? President, I'm ready for the vote.
All right.
Voting should be open. That vote should be up.
That item passes. Next item.
Item five, a resolution approving the following advanced expense accounts. Camilla Gray, Lewis Committee Assistant City Council, Atlanta, Georgia, five hundred and twenty-six dollars, May twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, two thousand sixteen, to attend UNESCO meeting. Camilla Gray, Lewis Committee Assistant City Council, Tuscaloosa, Alabama, no amount, May twenty-fifth, two thousand sixteen, to attend EPA and ADECA meetings. William Parker, Counselor, City Council, Tuscaloosa, Alabama, no charge there, May twenty-fourth, two thousand sixteen, to attend EPA and ADECA meetings. William Parker, Counselor, City Council, Memphis, Tennessee, one thousand eighty-five dollars fifty-six cents, May the twenty-fifth and the twenty-sixth, two thousand and sixteen, to attend UNESCO meeting. William Parker, Counselor, City Council, Atlanta, Georgia, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars and seventy-two cents, May the twenty-sixth through the twenty-eighth, two thousand and sixteen, to attend UNESCO meeting.
Who the item?
Second. Roberson, Parker.
Okay. Voting should be open. That vote should be up.
That item passes, one no vote. Next item.
Should be item six, in ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a cost-sharing agreement between the City of Birmingham and the City of Mountain Brook for the purpose of making certain improvements to Kahaba Road, US two eighty, Culver Road, Lane Road. The City of Mountain Brook will contract with the State of Alabama for improvements with eighty percent of the cost to be paid by the state using federal transportation funds. The City of Mountain Brook will be responsible for the remaining twenty percent of the cost. The City of Birmingham will reimburse half of those costs to the City of Mountain Brook in an amount not to exceed three hundred and forty-nine thousand one hundred dollars. And this is the first reading. I need you, C, to bring it before us.
Who the item?
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Who the item?
Second.
Mr. President? Yeah, I just wanted to ask Mr. Bittes if I might see the plan, since this is in my district.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, I mean, I saw the plans back three years ago when Alda first proposed it, but they probably have changed.
Yeah, yeah, we, uh, about two years ago, we did some kind of conceptual planning studies to make sure that we can really modify that intersection, that coming off the expressway, and we think we have a good, good way to do it. So now, as soon as this approved, we can go to start working on the design phase, and we'll share with you the plans.
Okay, and one other question. Will the City of Birmingham have to give up any property in order to do this?
We don't know yet, Counselor. As soon as we get the survey done and do some layouts on that proposed intersection improvement, it could be, you know, a roundabout, it could be a signalized intersection, then we'll know, you know, how much property we may have to give out or not. But it's really, the whole intersection is really in Alda, right-of-way, Mountain Brook, and some in Birmingham. So until we come up with a alignment, we don't know that, but...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Do we have any other speakers? Ready to vote, Ms. Clerk.
All right, voting should be up. Pro Tim Hoyt, Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
That vote should be up.
That item passes. Next item.
Item thirteen, a resolution appointing three members to the zoning board of adjustments. One to fill the unexpired term of Anthony C. Hood, a non-affiliated member, and said term is by November twenty-fifth, two thousand and sixteen. One to fill the unexpired term of Patricia A. Taylor, building contractor, said term is by November twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen, and one non-affiliated member, said term is by November twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two.
I move the item.
Second. All right. Abbott, Roberson. Do we have any names that are being presented? Mr. Pro Tim, yeah, your name, yeah?
I was trying to see.
Here they are.
Item thirteen?
Yeah.
This is planning and zoning.
Just read thirteen.
I know.
We open up the floor for nominations.
You read number thirteen, it gives you the name.
I know. Okay. Can nominate them? You want to say? Who missing?
Yes, I am.
Do we have the resumes of those persons?
They were in the pack.
Waiting on the chairperson from the committee to speak.
This board, um, the seats on this board have specific qualifications that have to be met, and in reviewing those resumes by the Planning and Zoning Department, as well as the committee, the three that are being brought forward meet those criteria. Appointment Jay Lance Lucas is replacing Patricia A. Taylor. The expiration date for that term is November twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen. Don Cosper is replacing Bobby Horn. That expiration date is November twenty-fifth of two thousand and twenty-two. Henry L. Pinnock will be replacing Anthony C. Hood, and that expiration date is November twenty-fifth, two thousand and sixteen.
And what are the qualifications? You leave reference to the head.
That would be Mr. Gambrell has those qualifications.
Yeah, Mr. Lucas is, um, he's engaged in the building trades. He's a project manager for Hoar Construction, has managed, you know, several projects. I think some of them listed on his resume, you know, a hundred and fifty million dollar hospital somewhere.
What was the qualifications for those positions?
Oh, okay. Well, that's a different question, yeah. So Patricia Taylor is a building contractor. That position must be replaced with a building, a building professional. And I believe these other two positions are actually at large. Mr. Horn, elderly, was ready to resign, has had some injuries recently, unfortunately. And so Don Cosper was going to replace him. He's a, you know, long, longtime architect in the city. He's a neighborhood officer, I believe with the Redmont Neighborhood. And then Mr. Hood, likewise, just, he was a recent appointee, but didn't have time to participate, resigned. And so Mr. Pinnock, I believe, has actually served in the past, in years past. He's a longtime attorney in the city. Graduated from Princeton University back in the sixties.
I recall him. Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
All right, do we have any other names to be entered into nomination? We'll close on those names. We're ready to vote.
All right, voting should be up.
Aye.
Are you down?
Yeah.
Okay. That vote, Ms. Counsel, Abbott. That vote should be up.
That item passes. Next item should be twenty-eight.
Item twenty-eight, a resolution approving the following advanced expense account. Sheila Tyson, Counselor, City Council, Rochester, New York, one thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars and forty-two cents, June the sixth through the eighth, two thousand and sixteen, to attend City's Age, the New American City.
Second.
Parker, Abbott, we're ready to vote.
Voting should be open now. That vote should be up.
That item passes. Next item, Ms. Clerk, that, I think that concludes our agenda.
I'm sorry.
That's it, I think that concludes.
Oh, yes, sir.
Um, we'll go back to the communication from the mayor. Good morning, Mr. Patton.
Good morning, Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the council. We've got just a couple of things this morning. Mr. Don Loophole should be walking through the door as we speak to talk about Food Truck Friday. Mr. Loophole.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Patton. Counselors, um, we have a number of things going on in the next few days, and I'm happy to tell you that tomorrow we start our farmer's market again on short, well, at the corner of Short Twentieth and Park Place. And, um, I always refer to it as a small, but good, farmer's market. And we'll have some vendors out there that, um, that are associated with the Pepper Place Farmer's Market. So come out in the morning, seven-thirty till about noon, and buy your tomatoes and your peaches and your vegetables. And then on Friday, due to Steel City Jazz being in the park, we'll move our food trucks to Nineteenth Street, and we'll have a number of food trucks out there from like eleven until two. So if you're hungry during the lunch hour, we would encourage everybody to come. And then on Monday, June the thirteenth, we're gonna do some solid gold back out in the park like we've done the past couple of months on Monday, and gonna have a great time. The first night with Prince, we probably had a close to three thousand people, and last week, which started a little slow, but it built up to about a thousand. It's a great free event, and just gives our people something to do and come out and enjoy the music on Monday. So vegetables tomorrow, food trucks on Friday, and music on Monday the thirteenth. Hope to see everybody there.
Thank you. This past week, there were over a hundred participants from the City of Birmingham, neighborhood officers that went to NUSA in Memphis, Tennessee. Ms. Sybil Scarborough is here to give a brief report. Ms. Scarborough.
Good morning, counsel. Mr. Patton. We had a phenomenal time in Memphis. I know sometimes many wonder, well, what happens or what do they do when, when they get there? I can vouch that our neighborhood officers and members who were there took part in many workshops that were available. Several of them flooded the grants writing workshops. One that I thought was just most amenable to us is one on mediation in neighborhoods and helping neighbors learn how to resolve issues that they may have. So we learned everything from becoming sustainable, funding, and everybody just had a great time. So we just thank you for allowing us to participate. And to remind you that in May, on May twenty-third through twenty-sixth of two thousand and eighteen, the conference will be in Birmingham, Alabama. So we met people from all across the United States, even Japan, who said they will definitely be in Birmingham at that time. So thank you. Any questions?
Well, Mr. President, yeah, well, I, you know, I've always been excited about NUSA and really apologize for not being able to go this year. But I've always been an opinion, because I've been in the workshops, and I know how they've had an effect on me and some of the initiatives that we've undertook. And so I'm, I'm always in support of neighborhood officers going to NUSA. You won't ever hear anything from me about that, but I think it's wonderful that Birmingham can participate. And matter of fact, we serve as best practices for most of the cities throughout the country and, and from, from the perspective of Japan, of the world, quite frankly. And so I just think it's wonderful. I think it's good when the mayor's staff goes and attends, and I saw several of them on Facebook, out there, you know, doing what they need to do, still attending to our neighborhood officers, and I think that's really wonderful. So I say kudos. I was hoping we'd bring one, one of those national awards back here, but I guess I got to enter again.
Let me tell you what I recommend that we do. When they had the different sessions on the neighborhoods that won Neighborhood of the Year, every single category that they won in was something that's already working in Birmingham.
Mm-hmm.
So in the Office of Community Resource Services, uh, we did send the application out. Um, I don't believe many, if any, uh, neighborhoods in Birmingham applied. We need to, because we had to sit there at that table, as many of us that were there, and watching these neighborhoods get awards for programs that are already working here in our city. So, um, we just have to do a different job promoting what, um, we do. I actually had the honor of, um, being a workshop presenter this year. So whatever I can do to get the word out, uh, to our neighborhoods, to put us in the forefront, that's absolutely what we're gonna do.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Tyson, can you join me, uh, at the podium? And members of the Valerie Allen family, could you please come forward at this time? There are about fifty of these that are printed each year, made of crystal each year. We find outstanding members of the community to award them to. Uh, Ms. Tyson, tell us what's going on and why we're doing this.
Well, I know, uh, we, um, have discussed as a council that we wasn't going to rename any streets, and we have a, um, a minimum of, uh, dedication to streets. But Valerie Denise Allen, she actually grew up with me and Lundie, um, actually across the street from me, walking distance from my house. But the addition that she gave to, just to the community, uh, Valerie made the community really understand that they could become homeowners, that we didn't have to rent. Uh, and that we could afford to move on the lake in Hoover, when a lot of us thought we really couldn't. Uh, I know Cedric, I know, he really, uh, uh, knows everything that, about what Valerie did. Besides, she was a, uh, she, she worked for UPS for years. She stopped working for UPS and retired, and she started her own, she bought her own truck. And it was a dangerous job, but Valerie was so good at what she did. She sold houses, she could repair credit, she just was just an all-around type person. And she was like that in high school. She was very smart. And I used to always tell her, I said, Valerie, I know you're a millionaire, just don't want to tell nobody. But I, I'm, I'm serious. I knew she was because of what she did. And it wasn't nothing that she touched, it didn't turn into gold. You know, she gave me even the idea to actually buy houses and rent them out. I had, I had no idea how to do that. But she sat down one day and she actually showed me, she was willing to teach you what she knew and how to make money. But she was a, the best person that I have known in a long time, that really was, she's not selfish, period. And I would really like for, uh, the, the Allen family to know how much the community cared for her. And I actually had calls from the community to actually, well, we can't name a street after. I said, we can't do that. And they said, well, we need to do something. And I said, well, can, I'm gonna see about, I, I talked to the mayor, see if we can dedicate a day. So June the fourth, that's be the first Saturday in June, starting in two thousand and sixteen, would be better known as Valerie Denise Allen Day. And they would actually have a. And the jazz, uh, concert that we have, Steel City Jazz, is her brother, uh, Cedric, actually, uh, is the, uh, director and the owner of that. And we will give a scholarship out in her name. We still collecting money. And we will have a person come from the community that she was raised in, but actually receive that money that was raised. And we will do the, that every year, starting this year. And I would like for Cedric to come up and say something.
Well, man, that was, uh, man, uh, due to her untimely death, I have to admit that Mrs. Tyson is, is a hundred percent correct. She touched so many lives, and until you leave, you don't know how many. And we just thank the councilors, President Austin, Mayor Bill, and Patton, all you guys that have made this possible. You truly have touched our lives. Uh, thank God my mom is here to see this moment, and I can assure you that we do want to make this the gateway to the world, Birmingham. And we will do everything in our power, if I may say that, to make sure it does not go unnoticed. You have our word, my word, my family's word. Thank you so much for this moment and this opportunity.
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
To the mayor and to the president of the council and all the city councilors, I just would like to say thank you for, on behalf of my daughter. She was killed in a tragic accident, but she will forever live in our hearts. And we thank you for honoring her, Councilor Tyson. We thank you all for that day. And we already have started to receiving money for the scholarship fund, thanks to each of you. Just say a prayer for our family, because we are still grieving, but God is able. Thank you.
All right. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all, Mr. President. Counselor, if we have any, uh, councilors to, uh, rest the mayor's office.
I would like to.
Counselor Abbott, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, on last week, Dr. Lee and I took a tour of Red Mountain Park. And we had a great time, learned a lot about, even more about the history of Birmingham than we already knew, because Mr. Dion knows, I think he knows more about our history than people who grew up here. But the thing that I wanted to ask Mr. Patton, you know, they have a herd of goats that, uh, keeps the park clean. They eat all the vegetation, things that don't belong there, privet, all that mess. And Mr. Dion said that they would be glad to rent us some goats too, for some of these places. These places in the city that need to be cleaned up of unwanted vegetation. And, um, and I just wanted to know if, I mean, the offer has been made in the past, certainly not a surprise to y'all. I was just wondering if we were considering, uh, taking them up on that offer. They said they had seventy kids born this spring, so they have an excess of goats that are very hungry.
Let me defer to, uh, the stately gentleman, Mr. Fancher, on that, please. Mr. Fancher, would you care to respond to the goats?
Uh, good morning.
Morning.
Actually, the city of Seattle does that as a matter of routine. They have a goat patrol that, that actually maintains their vacant lots in, within the city limits of Seattle. So there are a number of cities that have started doing that.
Are you going to be one of the cities that joins in, our city? Because then we could be well-known like Seattle.
We would find that to be very useful if, in fact, it does not violate any zoning ordinances concerning farm animals.
Well, I, I think they deliver them and then they take them back away again. We'll have to inquire about our ordinances, because, you know, things like, we tore down Larkway Gardens. Who's keeping that property clean? You can't cut it every three weeks like it needs, but you could put a fence around it and let the goats clean it. You know, and that would, I would think that would save the city a lot of money. So I would just like for us to be creative and consider some things that we haven't ever considered before, because the goats just want to eat.
They eat anything.
And they're not, and they'll eat any vegetation. So they showed us where they had stripped it bare. I mean, down to the nubs, there was no greenery left. And I thought, you know, that would be, I mean, they wouldn't pull the grass up out of the ground, but I think that that's something we need to look at, so that we can become famous for innovation. I like the idea of innovation. It was pretty impressive. The whole park was impressive, but you know, I like animals, so. And they send their guard dogs with them. So they're not just out there alone. But anyway, I just wanted to ask about that, because I thought that was a creative way to deal with all of the vegetation that seems to keep growing.
Mr. Fancher, you're now sitting talking also about the pooper scoopers that probably would be used.
That's fertilizer, free.
Okay, yeah.
Free fertilizer.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Patton, uh, sixteen fifteen Avenue I. That's the home we discussed, um, next to Mr. Carr. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Counselor Abbott.
Thank you, and I just wanted to piggyback on, um, what Counselor Abbott said, 'cause we've, Roughnor Mountain is also discussing with, um, Dr. Foster at the zoo, because their, their goats are a little sickly and need some recreational time, eating some stuff that they usually don't get fed in the zoo. But, um, I, I, I have at least three constituents in the Roebuck Springs area that have heard of goats that have offered to volunteer and take them out and also groom. And their waste is natural fertilizer as well. And, uh, they're quite easy to take care of and, um, move in and out of area, and they don't require contracts or council approval, except at the very beginning. And, um, they're not looking for raises, um, or benefits, just let them eat all of the weeds that we can, Mr. Patton. That would be a wonderful idea. Oh, and their exhaust is minimal.
Any other members you'd like to speak or address the mayor? All right. Let's move to suspend the rules of our speakers, Mr. Clerk.
So move.
Yeah.
Aye. All opposed. First speaker.
Donnie O'Ford.
State your name and address for the record. Mr. Ford, you have three minutes.
Good morning to everyone. My name is Donnie O'Ford. I live at four sixth, excuse me, eleven oh four Heritage Way, Birmingham, Alabama, three five two one one. My problem is there's a Woodland Park Church of Christ in my back door, and they have built, I believe, they say it's going to be a school or something. But their garbage dump is about thirty feet from my kitchen, directly in my door. The guy that I spoke to, uh, I didn't know what it was, because I've been ill and I've been in the hospital, so one of my friends came over to see me. He asked me, did I know what that was? And I told him, no. He said, that's a garbage, uh, exposure. And I talked to one of the members of the church after about a week and a half of trying to get in touch with somebody. And I asked him, why did they had to put it directly in the back door? He said he would check and see and get back in touch with me. Well, he never did call back, and, um, last Friday, I called from a different phone and got him on the phone. And, uh, he told me, uh, that's where they put it, and they're not going to move it. So that's that. So I'm wondering what can be done about that now. They had a garbage, uh, B F I garbage dump about, um, eighty-five or ninety feet from the house when they, uh, on, on side of the church. But now this garbage dump here is about thirty feet from my kitchen door. And I've had been dealing with the fear mouse, the nests and the flies over there when they put whatever they were putting in there. But now it is directly in my door, back door. So I'm wondering what can be done about that.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask you a question. Now, you say a garbage dump, do you mean a dumpster? Or do you mean they're just throwing stuff out?
No, 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 it's a, to tell you the truth, I don't know what it is, because I asked the young man, the deacon that, at the church, he didn't know what it was. And I told him, I say, uh, no, the people that draw up this plan, the people at your church who are on the building committee, don't have no respect or nothing for nobody else's property. Now you wouldn't want this directly in the back of your house. Now I got a picture, if I'm allowed to show you what I'm talking about. If you can see this where the garbage dump is going to be. And that's about thirty feet from my back door, where it was over in, in this corner here. So I asked them. Now, now this, this here is a picture standing in my kitchen. And you see where that silver thing right there? And that's where the, they, I really don't, they say it's a garbage exposure. I really don't know what it is, because I can't, uh, find no one to tell me what it is. Now I asked, did anyone have the number to the person who is building the building? All of a sudden, don't about to know nothing. So before this thing get any further, I'm trying to find out what can be done about it.
Is this place where they dump garbage, is that underneath that shed roof that's shown in the big picture?
I, I, I think so. I'm not sure, 'cause I don't know what it is. They say it's gonna be a garbage exposure down. And I asked him, I said, well, why you couldn't put it back in the corner or put it where you had it first? And they said something about it's gonna be hooked up to the sewage. I say, still, you could have put it in the corner, ran a line from that, what it is there, down to the sewage. So they told me, well, they didn't tell me nothing. Their deacon told me, deacon Looney, uh, Looney told me that, uh, they have put it there and they're not going to move it, so. And they just put that there about two weeks ago.
Well, I, I, certainly. I, I think that, um, Mr. Patton is probably willing to help with, uh, help you on this. Uh, I can see where that would be a problem with me, and obviously, just looking at these pictures, your property looks like it's well-maintained, and to have a dumpster, uh, that also gives off an odor and, and those kinds of things, is not, uh, would help your quality of life. And I think the church doesn't live there, they just worship there. And the church should be willing to move that on the other side or some other place, other than, uh, in your, in your yard, right, right in front of it. In particular, it looks like you got a deck here that you sit out on.
Yes, sir.
And that's not fair to you. And, uh, and again, the church only, they go there to worship, they don't live there, but you live there.
Yes, sir.
And so I would have problems with that, quite frankly. And, um, and maybe we need to get, uh, code enforcement out there to see, because that, that should have never been approved, uh, quite frankly, in my estimation.
Yes, sir.
And maybe, um, the chairwoman of planning and zoning can maybe, uh, even have somebody go out there and look at it with you. Oh, Mr. Bittes, okay. Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Frank Matthews, two two seven two, Ledgewood Lane. Hoping the chairman of the committee had stayed in. We talking about goats and property and all that. Please give a copy, what you about to get is a report that was filed by a police officer, on a police officer, who was maced. And that seemed that last- And that seemed that last week, there was such glorious accreditation that was given to our fine police department. But there's just some things that's going too wrong. And if you were read the second page, Counselor Tyson and definitely, uh, Counselor Abbott and Counselor Rafferty, if you were read the second page of the report, you would have thought maybe it was a gang fight that went on between these police officers. But the bad part of it, it, it was covered away. It was locked away. Last, two weeks ago, when I made request for information as it relates to the situation of the investigation and then the request, which was a federal crime, after I addressed this counsel, the police chief admitted that a request was indeed made from the N C C I of one Austin, matter of fact, a demand. So I have certified some letters. I asked this counsel to use your investigation power according to Article seven, eight point three of the Mayor Council Act to give you subpoena power to call for judgment. And then I seen your attorney and the news call for an investigation. Nothing has happened. So after that, I began to get these letters and calls. And this report was buried deep somewhere and I had to meet a police officer in disguise to get it. My phone number had been just blowing up. And one police, you know, most police don't like me. They said, you're a godsend as we excavating these things that are going on in our city. And so I need the chairman of the Public Safety Committee to pay very close attention to this. Just look at the language. Matter of fact, after officer was maced, uh, they wouldn't even help him. And then the officer that maced the officer, he tells the trainee to go get some sweet tea and put it in his eyes. Let me read the report. This is the kind of, read it. You got it. It happened on sixth last year, six twenty-seven. Just a few months before the other things happen, incident happened. Where alleged that Mr. Herman Harris went down to nine one one in request. So I certified some letters. One is going to U S Attorney General Loretta Lynch. One is going to U S Attorney Alice White. And we asking in the first letter for Loretta Lynch to disqualify Ms. White because she has such a propensity for the mayor. One's going to Mr. Brandon Falls because we sent a letter to both of them and neither one of them respond. So we going up the food chain because what's going on in this city with some of our police department? Let me tell you something. I met with at least twelve police officers. And they are highly upset because in this incident where the black guy was maced by the white guy, they suspended one for thirty days and suspended another for fifteen, guess which one? And then they brought the other one just recently back to Italy. And white and black police officers are upset because this Mason officer is back where he committed the incident. Some things are going on. One, we had a police officer shoot a man on his knees, got a medal for it, then we found out they lied. Did she suppose to rescind the medal? Did they rescind it? What went on with it? Then we find out a year later that this, uh, alleged person goes down to nine one one, tried to access, oh, so that's why I'm requesting also of the custodian of records, certifying him according to the Uniform Information Act. Because if none of you want to know what happened, down there, the citizens want to know. You know why we want to know? Let me tell you why we want to know, and I know I got a few minutes, so let me finish this up. You know why they want to know? Because let me tell you something. Pro of allegations, y'all recall this back in eleven. Birmingham City Attorney's are investigating allegations of ethics violation by City Councilwoman LaShanna Scale. A former business associate Scale told City officials the councilwoman used police and city departments for personal business and used her counsel position to intimidate business associates during a dispute according to the memorandum from the city law department. Was the memorandum on the nine one one? Six pages was investigated. And then the chief come out of order. He says, oh, we investigated the nine one one by two inner city department. That's not the order. Jim Woodward Sheriff went to jail. His attorney went to jail because they made the request. The same thing. Where is the memorandum? Six pages of report on LaShanna Scale and some water and using the police. But the other one can go down and do the things to do. Let me tell you something. That medal, where the hell is that medal? The chief said he would send it. Where is it? Why was this report hearing from y'all? Any of y'all, any of y'all get this report? Did you get it? And let me get it, let me get, uh, Mr. Patton a copy. So I want to make sure the mayor gets his.
Your time is up.
Excuse me?
Your time is up.
I'm through. Does the mayor read that report? Make sure you read the second page. I hope he don't get maced trying to read it. Because some of our officers are out of control, ladies and gentlemen. That's a minute percentage of it. We have some great officers, but these goats, I see you reading that, Ms. Abbott. These goats, we need to get them out to Department of Grazing. They grow in, grazing their own field. And Ms. Kim Rafferty, you so police minded, I hope you're reading that second page. I hope you're reading it. This is what they're doing. This is why the young gangsters in them do not respect some of our policing. When you see them fighting like cats and dogs and spraying each other with mace and y'all don't even know about it?
Next speaker. Mr. Jenkins, is he here? State your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Jenkins, William Jenkins, eight one twenty-four Avenue North, Eastlake. Um, to the, to the, to the House of the Mayor and, uh, to the city council. I'd like to tell you, Mr. Parker, um, that we had a wonderful men's day at Old Street Baptist Church. I did a welcome and occasion and we had a wonderful time. Also, um, Ms. Scale, William Parker, I need three, this is, uh, her brother-in-law from Old Street Church. Uh, the, um, passed away, Dr. Jerome Scale is her brother-in-law. They announced in church Sunday, Old Street Church. And also, we getting ready to have our vacation Bible school, Mr. Parker. We want to invite you to our vacation Bible school leading up to a picnic on the corner field, uh, at Old Mountain State Park. And, uh, I'd like to say, um, I had a nice time out there to the park, Mr. Parker. It was real nice out there to the, uh, dedication ceremony, out there to the park, out there to, uh, out there at the Collegeville Park. I think everything going to look in good shape, good, good, good shape out there. The Collegeville Park, the children going to enjoy out there, the park. And, um, Ms. Parker, I mean Barbara told me, please tell you to put us on the genuine so we could get your, uh, present your plaque, something for you, is it for you, Mr. Parker? Present, get us on the, on the genuine so we present your, uh, plaque. And also, um, this one, we, we ain't got no information yet, but it is coming up pretty soon, the reunion. Uh, Carver High School, uh, picnic coming up. We'll let y'all know about that later. I ain't got no information, but we'll let you know about that. The Mighty Rounds in the Carver High School, going to be at the school, as far as I know. But we, I ain't got all the information, but we will let y'all know about the, uh, Carver, uh, picnic, the Mighty Rounds picnic this year coming up. And like I said, we had a wonderful time. We going a great amount common coming up in June. The, um, Men of Praise, that's the next engagement we, uh, going to be at. And, uh, District Four, I wish that everybody had a nice and moral day for all the District Four in Collegeville. I imagine everybody had a wonderful time. Barbecued ribs and everything, had a wonderful time. And I'm proud of my Leon Jenkins. He graduated from Carver High School, going to, uh, going to, uh, college. Tuscaloosa, I forgot what, uh, but he is going to college, but I'm proud of him. And, uh, he, um, finished from Carver in, uh, two thousand sixteen, and I'm proud of him. And so I just want to, couldn't get his career to keep going on. And, uh, want to let you know that God will him, you know. And Suprema, my nephew, other nephew, she already graduated, but Leon, he just graduated from Carver and they had a wonderful, uh, graduation exercise. I went to the graduation exercise. But, uh, Mr. Austin, you, uh, one day, I would like for you to come see us at the Men of Praise one day, Mr. Austin, President. See us, we're really going to sing your song. You come, we'll sing your song when you come. Yeah, we'll sing a song for you, Men of Praise. Police Chief John Johnson saying with him. Yeah, yeah, we got some guys from showing us, sang some songs. So I'm asking you, come check us out, uh, Mr. Austin, President. We'll let you know, we'll let you know when the next, uh, event coming up, uh, we'll be seeing at, uh, you know, and we'll let you know.
Uh, thank you. Next speaker. That concludes our speakers. We're down to old and new business. Counselor Roberson.
Uh, my prayers go out to, uh, the Smith family. John Smith was a great man in the community of Roosevelt City. Educated many young people at Jones Valley Middle School. Picked them up, got them where they needed to go. Mentored a lot of young men in the community. Was an outstanding citizen, uh, from District Seven. He actually was a coworker of my mother, uh, at Jones Valley Middle School when she taught there. He would truly be missed. I see Rhonda standing over there. She's related to Mr. Smith, the Maston family. And our prayers go out to, uh, the Smith family. They're dealing with a lot right now, uh, despite his moving on. But we're going to lift him up in prayers and, uh, stay close and share the love that they need at this time. I move for a resolution of sympathy for the Smith family.
Aye.
All opposed.
Uh, move the item.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
That passes.
Thank you. Um, and our prayers are with the Smith family moving forward. Um, this Thursday, June second, at six o'clock P M., there'll be a town hall meeting in District Seven. Uh, the Housing Authority Director, Mr. Michael Lundie, will be addressing, uh, citizens in the Oxmoor Valley, uh, community regarding a housing project. I ask that all citizens that live, uh, throughout the district like to be there to be a part of this insight and direction and conversation related to a housing project to please come to the Oxmoor Valley Community Center at six o'clock on, uh, Thursday, June second uh, to hear, to learn more about a potential project that will take place in the Oxmoor Valley, uh, neighborhood. Please come out at six o'clock on, uh, Thursday, June the second. Um, one other announcement real quick is that we have a Jones Valley Neighborhood Meeting, uh, this Friday at four o'clock. Jones Valley Neighborhood Meeting will take place this Friday at four o'clock. Thank you.
All right, Counselor Tyson.
So I have some, uh, requests to the mayor first. Fourteen thirty-three Fulton Avenue. The structure of this house, it's only the frame left, left. I went over there, I had a complaint from, uh, the lady that actually stayed next door. The property owner actually exchanged words with her when she asked him why he would not just go ahead on and tear it down. And I want to see if I can get someone out there to twel-, uh, to fourteen thirty-three Fulton Avenue Southwest. Also, on the same street at fourteen twenty-eight, is a set of a bar, an abandoned apartments. It's only two residents in the apartments. The rest of the apartments is boarded up and the back end is falling in. I don't know why, and these residents pay rent. That's what I don't understand. How can they pay rent in a structure look like that? I called the, uh, the owner and they said that they keep the grass cut and that they got them boarded up and the ones that's, that they have someone staying in it, they don't have no complaints from them. So they would, they are working on getting money to fix the apartments. But the apartment's been like that, I know, for the last five years. And I'm almost positive that's a code, uh, violation. And I would like to see, Mr. Patton, if I can get someone out there. Also, on the same street, fourteen twenty Fulton Avenue, is a, is a, an, uh, an abandoned house. The street has about maybe four to five abandoned houses. You have about three residents that live on that street and then at an abandoned apartment complex. So the neighbors are very, um, concerned about this. And I have reported this, I've reported this every year that I have been up here at City Hall. But we still have not gotten, you know, just hadn't gotten anywhere with it. And I want to see if I can get something moving on this. And if, can I have a report, uh, Mr. Patton, within a couple of, with a couple of weeks on this problem that these residents are having? Thank you. And I let me give you my, uh, my announcements. Powelly Neighborhood would be meeting at four P M. at the Henry Crumpum Recreation Center, June sixth. Um, the P I C meeting will be Tuesday, June fourteenth, two P M. in Conference Room A. My sister's keeper, uh, Women's Empowerment Series will resume on Thursday, June, June the seventeenth at Lovemans Village, beginning at five. This past weekend, we had a, um, a ribbon curtain, actually in the west end area on Tuscaloosa Avenue, right in the back of, uh, rallies. And these apartments, they rent out for eight fifty. But when I tell you nice, they are just, they were, I was just really surprised because I, I went in them about a month, about, yeah, about four weeks ago. And they weren't finished with them, but when I tell you nice, they are super nice. Uh, granite, uh, countertops, hardwood floors all the way through. Uh, just a magnificent, uh, well polished bathroom, antique light fixtures, ceiling fans in all of the rooms. It's just fabulous. And they are completely full. And even with that amount of rent, I want the city council to know that even in that area that we was, uh, on Tuscaloosa Avenue, we were having so many problems, people would still come out and rent apartments in that area when they are presented with good things. When they are presented with bad things, it, it, it brings bad people in. And when you present them with good things, it brings good people in. So this area that they are in is just an upgrade for that area. And I think everyone is so excited about it. And that's the end of my report.
Counselor Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, one brief, I guess, request. Um, next week, if, if it's possible, if we could, could do a brief, uh, presentation. There's a, um, an announcement tomorrow where the EPA and some grant funding for the city and also Lawson State. And I wanted to know if next week, if it's meaningful, if we take two or three minutes to, uh, present those to the council and make a brief, uh, report on that, if that's acceptable. Okay, all right. That, that's, that's my only announcement. Thank you, sir.
Counselor Abbott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, very brief report this morning. We have, um, the next Education Committee meeting will be on June twenty-eighth at two P M. In Conference Rooms D and E. Just a reminder for people to, for all the council members to send in any questions or concerns, uh, about the Board of Education because they're, they're waiting for our questions. The neighborhood meetings for tonight are the Glen Iris Neighborhood, which meets at six thirty at Saint Elias. And tomorrow night, Forest Park, South Avondale will meet at six thirty, also at, uh, the Avondale Library. I certainly hope everyone had a great Memorial Day and didn't eat too much barbecue. But if you did, go to the gym and wear it all off, so there's still hope. But I did want to make another comment about the Red Mountain Park. If there are people who have not been to see that park, it is so impressive. It is amazing that they have raised every penny themselves for everything that's been done in that park. Plus, they've gotten help from people in the community, from businesses. But they haven't come to the city council and asked us for anything. And that's pretty impressive because they've got two zip lines. And they said one of those zip lines took an hour and a half to go through it all, which sounds pretty detailed to me. Uh, I was certainly happy with the goats, but they also have a climbing tower and all of those historical sites that are there that were covered up with kudzu and have now been uncovered so that people can learn more about the history of Birmingham. And on top of that, it's beautiful. Fifteen hundred acres in Birmingham that we can all go to and we can wander that park to our heart's content for free. The only things you pay for are the extras which help keep the park running. So you can rent a Segway and ride up and down the trails instead of walking. You know, if you really don't need any exercise, like you're pencil thin. But, um, it was, it was very impressive. I, I was embarrassed that I had not been there. I think Counselor, uh, Counsel President and I went out for a tour about three or four or five years ago. And it's just changed so much and it's, it's just incredibly impressive. So, you know, it's good for adults, but it's great for kids, uh, the ones who aren't afraid of that zip line. So, uh, I just wanted to say. So I just wanted to say that it's a real asset for the city of Birmingham and we were, we were impressed. So, and that's it for my report. I just hope everyone had a great Memorial Day. Thank you.
Counsel Scales.
Thank you, Ms. Protem. Well, I'm still looking forward to, and the budget Carver Theater is gonna get everything they rightfully deserve because they don't have those kind of friends that can raise money. And they came to the council, the city owns the building. I look forward to four and a half million dollars going their way. And that's gonna be a good thing. Wanted to ask Mr. President, Mr. Patton, representing the mayor in his absence. We asked Mr. Patton because I'm actually sick. I was around someone with walking pneumonia. And so I'm gonna spread the love to you too. And so that I came all the way from east Birmingham just to find out, sir, if you will approve the Law Department to finally look at this contract. The Mayor Council Act was changed, but I didn't think it was changed to make it where the Law Department don't respond to the lawmaking body of the city. So I'm asking respectfully, sir, this morning, if you can give me an answer if the Law Department can review the same contract that they did on last year so that the citizens of District One can be able to use the funds that we have been appropriated in our budget. But we can't do it without the Law Department. So do I have your permission this morning, Mr. Patton, for them to review it?
I'll get with the Law Department, ma'am.
Is that a yes or no?
That's a yes.
Okay, and I appreciate that. Because I came just to show you some love, how important you are to me, that I want us to get this done. And I'm even in fact willing to do the typing, sir. All I need is for them to approve the contract through the form. And I'm gonna say it in their presence because one of them worked with it last year and they know that we will do the work. All we're asking is for the money not to go into the general fund. But respectfully, if we can apply to the event, same event as we did last year, we're not doing nothing new. In addition to that, I do wanna thank everyone who came out for Jazz in the Park. I think that is a very good and cultural event that is in every district, all nine districts of the city. And I'm happy to announce to the general public, we had over a thousand people over there at Huffman High School. We turned out in numbers. And, and so I just wanted to say thank you to this council. Thank you to the mayor's office, all those who played a part. We had a wonderful time. And as a matter of fact, Mr. Patton, one of the persons who performed in that particular event is one that we're looking to bring back for our Music and Movie Festival. So that is going to be wonderful, wonderful. And while I'm saying that, I'm also grateful that we have Steel City Jazz coming up, which is gonna start on Thursday of this week. I'm always proud when I see everyone getting equal opportunity to do business in the city of Birmingham. And so these gentlemen, one is from here, both of them actually are from here. And, and they start on Thursday, goes all the way through Saturday. So I look forward to that. We do have neighborhood meetings on this week. Echo Highlands Neighborhood Association, they meet at Wynwood Baptist Church. Also, Spring Lake Neighborhood Association, they meet at the Springfield Road Library. And lastly, kudos to all of my students. You all saw it on last week. All my graduating students. Mama Scales is very proud. And we were able to say out of two, District One has one out of those two Gates Millennium Scholars. And not only did he receive his scholarship, it will allow him to also be able to go on to get his doctorate once he receives his bachelor's, master's, and then his doctorate. So he can come on back and help Mama Scales and the city of Birmingham to do what we do best. And I think, Mr. President, that is all, with the exception of, I do have just a few requests, Mr. Patton. There's a ditch in the fifteen hundred block of Seventh Street Northwest that needs to be cleaned out. And we also have in the twelve hundred block of Stonehead Drive that the trash has not been picked up on schedule to date. And so just wanna make sure we do that. But I wanted to say one more thing to you, Mr. President. I am so thankful to Public Works. This weekend, I always say I'm nice and nasty. I look out for Cam District too. But the Parkway was clean. I don't know if you saw that, Ms. Protem. Ms. Protem was out there. And I always wanna say thank you. Jesus healed twelve, only one came back to say thank you. So I'm very thankful, Mr. Patton, Mr. Fancher, all of the Public Works employees. Because when you make my folks smile in District One and also in partnership with my sister over here to the right of me, Counselora Rafferty. When you clean up our districts, I take notice. And I always want you to know that I am grateful. So to every Public Works employee, my hat's off to you. I'm very grateful for you. Thank you for keeping our district clean. And when it's dirty, I get on the folk. When it's clean, I'm gonna thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Ms. Protem, for coming out. And, Mr. President, you're such the best. You're simply the best. We're gonna do a Tina Turner song after you and Mr. Protem. Better than all the rest. Thank you, sir.
Actually, what I have is something I need to ask the administration about. I know that we've increased funding to the neighborhood associations in this proposed budget. I attended a neighborhood meeting last Thursday and heard an announcement that the administration had requested a list of projects that neighborhoods would like to complete using this funding. The deadline is June 3rd. So I go to my next neighborhood meeting. Kathy Perdue, the CRR for that neighborhood, said she had never heard of any directive being sent out from the mayor's office for this information from neighbors. For the neighborhoods to, the first problem I have is, the request was sent out June, May twenty-second, deadline June 3rd. Almost all the neighborhoods have met the first of the month. So they're not gonna be able to give input. The second thing is she stated that she had no knowledge of this, but she's the one who sent the request out May twentieth. And I need to understand what's going on because I've got neighborhoods upset because they never got this communication. And that the administration is requesting this input from the neighborhoods, but they don't know anything about it. And then they're only given two weeks, but they've already met, so they can't sit down and discuss this. So is the mayor going to back off of this deadline and give the neighborhoods ample time to respond?
Okay, I don't speak for the mayor, but I have no knowledge of any document that went out. So as far as it, that's fine, but I don't have any knowledge of it. As far as the administration is concerned, to my knowledge, nothing is going forward, to my knowledge.
Well, what I have here is a copy of an email who received information from Kathy Perdue, asking them to assemble a list of neighborhood association projects. This list will be used by Community Resource Services and the city legal department to revise the neighborhood spending guidelines. Each item on the list will be discussed to determine whether or not it is allowed use of neighborhood funds. Please reach out to each of the neighborhood associations in your community for their input. Then there's a follow-up that gives some ideas and stating that the deadline is Friday, June 3rd. And I, I just don't understand why nobody has any knowledge of this, or the one person who said they had no knowledge of it is actually the one who sent out the communication. And this was sent to the CAB to be distributed to the neighborhood associations. And I've got neighborhood associations upset because they never received the communication. And the communication, the answers are due this Friday.
Once again, ma'am, I, I don't have any knowledge of it. I'll get with Ms. Perdue as soon as I leave this meeting now.
This is very sad because she stood in that meeting and said she had no knowledge of it. And she's the one who made the request for the information.
That's my first time hearing that as well, Mr. Patton. I don't know anything about that. Counsel Tyson?
Yes, Judge Sparks, could you come up, please? Judge Sparks brought a group of smart, intelligent, young people from his church, and I would like for him to talk about.
Good morning. Now, Mr. Patton asked me if I wanted to bring him up. We only brought them so they could observe council meeting. This is the Youth Ambassador's Group from Forty-Fifth Street Baptist Church. We do a comprehensive youth program at the church. But we have some young folk whose parents have committed to do more and the kids have committed to do more. And so we created opportunities for them to get more exposure to what's going on. And so I brought them today.
Can you introduce them? Have them introduce themselves?
I would be glad to do that. Come on. They, they range in age from about nineteen down to about ten. Some of them, they're very sharp.
That's great.
And they already know that they're supposed to introduce themselves if asked to. So we're gonna let them start.
Good morning. I'm Jalen Maddox, a 2016 graduate of Hoover, and I'll be attending VCU this summer and fall.
Good morning. My name is Jessica Taylor, and I'm going to the seventh grade at Bumpus Middle School.
Good morning. My name is Levonce Eppris, and I graduated from Hoover High School and I'm going to Jeff State.
Good morning. My name is Doran Holmes. I finished at Woodline, twelfth grade, and I'm going to I forgot the college.
Good morning. My name is Nicholas Holmes, and I just graduated Mark the Gaskins, first and fifth grade. I'm going to the sixth.
Pull the mic down. Pull the mic down there.
My name is Anita Cade, and I, I graduated from fifth grade. And I'm going to Clay, Toffel Elementary, I mean, high, middle school.
That's all right.
Good morning. I'm Jordan Maddox. I'm, I just finished seventh grade. I'm going to the eighth grade at Bumpus Middle School.
Hello, my name is Jordan Hill. I just finished the seventh grade at Bragg Middle School and going to the eighth grade at the Aldana School for нас.
Good morning. My name is Anissa Owens. I'm going to the ninth grade, and I'm going to Chase Valley High School.
Good morning. My name is Joya Maddox, and I just finished the ninth grade at Hoover, Hoover High School, and I'm going to the tenth.
Excellent.
Thank you, thank you.
Judge.
Yes.
Don't let him leave just yet.
Hold, 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 hold on.
You didn't answer someone, one wanting to speak.
I'm sorry.
Since I'm coming from the sick and shedding, come on now. Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna participate. Well, first of all, I won't hold you, but I did wanna say how childlike you look. And for you young ladies, I want you to look like that. So, you know, I see how you're looking like. Now, what does that mean? You know, because you know y'all think y'all grown once you get to a certain age. What I mean is, a kid needs to look like a kid. And you look like children should look. You understand? Do you get it now? Okay, that's what's up. But I wanted to tell you, for you young men, I, I really applaud you. I applaud this whole group, and I hope that Judge to see them in some other arenas. I was listening very carefully. I saw my baby over here. Then that meant if you was at Martha Gaskins, you heard me. And so what, what, what did I tell you were? That's right. Failure is not an option. You were born to win. And so when I heard that, I said, okay, Hoover, Hoover, Hoover. Okay, so then I wanted Woodline and then I got me a checkmate right there in, in Martha Gaskins. But it don't matter where you go to school as far as you being here today. I just wanna tell Judge, I think he does an excellent job. I hope that all of us in politics will award you accordingly. And I want you to know you're doing great things over there at municipal court. And you all have a wonderful pastor to be proud of. And I'm sure Cedric is really working y'all over there too, right?
He is.
Okay, so congratulations. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Protem, your announcements.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to announce that the next Public Safety Transportation Committee will be meeting on Monday, April the sixth, at four thirty, in these, in these chambers on third floor. The Education With A Purpose Scholarship Perception will be introduced to the mayor and the council next week, providing a special presentation. Mr. President, I think Ms. Langford has made your staff, your office aware of that. Also, the Fairview Neighborhood Association meet on June the seventh, and that's at six o'clock at Five Points West Precinct. The Thomas Neighborhood Association meets on Tuesday, October the seventh, at six thirty at Mount Hebron. Central Park Neighborhood Association meets June the ninth, at six thirty, Five Points West. Just wanted to say that I got a chance to go out to District One yesterday. It was yesterday?
Saturday.
Saturday. Sunday, 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 Sunday. And it was just absolutely wonderful. This awesome violinist from Southern California was just superb. I didn't get to hear the, I did get to hear the lady, the Kim Scott. Who came, right, who came back up and did a duo, a duet rather, with, with a gentleman from California. And they were awesome together. And, and then I looked up there and I saw one of our own. That, that his background musicians were musicians from the city of Birmingham. And Katie Sankey grandson, who's a graduate of Miles College, was playing his keyboards. And, I mean, just awesome, awesome. And I was, initially, I thought these was the folk he brought from California too. Because he was such an excellent musician. And I'm always, you know, a student in hearing great music. You know, and I, I heard great music Sunday, and the crowd was just magnificent. So, Counsel, I thought it was about two thousand, but you, you say it was a thousand. I go, I go with it. I go with it. You know, I'm used to crowds, so I'd kinda engage a crowd until how many folks is there. But, but I thought it was excellent. I want to, it was something else, Mr. President, but I think I'm having a senior moment. Oh, yes, I, I did want to say, Mr. Patton, that there is a document that is floating around with respect to the inland port authority. I've asked to receive that in electronic form. I have yet to get it in electronic form. And I understand from one of the assistants to the mayor that it was above his pay grade to, to provide that. And so I'm asking again, so that we can review it in its form. And if you can provide a direct line copy too, because I think there were some changes made. And, and so we can get that in hand. Be most appreciative. I'm not against the port authority. But I do believe that we'll have to do it right and so that we all come on board. You know, some have mentioned that they are fully abreast, and that's all well and good. But this chairman needs to be fully abreast and this committee. And so, once I understand it, then I can embrace it. But I don't need to wonder about it. I think we have attorneys who are able to articulate that. That's one of Counsel Scales' terms. And so if you can just convey that to me. The, the terms of the agreement, and I want you, you know, talk to me about it. And I know Mr. Stanton is an expert on that. And so we can get caught up to speed. And then we'll be able to make some, some sound decisions with respect to what you're asking us to do, okay? And I don't need shenanigans. As I've experienced in the email, don't give me somebody waiting on us and what have you when they're, they're a government entity as we are. And, and they'll make their decision based on the information they have. And we're gonna make our decision based on the information we have. That's how that works. And I don't need anybody making up no, no stuff as you go and what have you. That's not how I operate. And I'm, you know, I'm very clear about what it is I need to be doing. And, you know, I'm one of those persons who know how to move on. I've shown that in this council. I know how to move on. I'm not one who had to go back and re-trail and all. I don't do all that. You know, I know how to move on and do it well. And, you know, that's how I operate. I used to be chair of certain things. I don't go and tell London what to do, because he knows what to do. And so that's how I operate. And so, um, that's how I operate, and I'm, I'm not one who dips back. Uh, you know, if I've done something, if I got a knowledge that I can offer somebody and they ask me, then I freely give it. But I'm not one who dips in other folks', uh, committees and try to take over and all that kind of stuff, I'm not one to do that. And I welcome any advice, 'cause I don't know it all. But I am here, and you need to respect the chair processes, because it's gonna always be right, 'cause that's what I employ. Thank you.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn? Second? Aye. This meeting is adjourned.